So long, he chose to leave the public in the dark. So Mike, once this 68-day approach of trying to keep the public in the dark comes to an end with this CBS report, what happens next?
Well, so everything that the president and the top aides around him had hoped wouldn't happen, well, that happens pretty quickly. So a few days later, on January 11th, there are more news reports that leak out, this time about the discovery of that second trove of documents back in December. Huge embarrassment for the Biden administration makes them look like what they had done, which was hold back information. Then the following day, January 12th, the Department of Justice comes out, Attorney General Merrick Garland says, look, we've been investigating President Biden and these documents, but now we're going to be appointing a special counsel to look into this, a much more formal investigation to what happened. It's a move that is often done when the Attorney General feels like there's so much politics swirling around a case like this, that you need somebody much more independent to conduct the investigation.
Right, and this is clearly the moment where all the calculations, Mike, that you have been describing, that Biden and those around him made, really seem to kind of fall apart, because the logic of it always was if we handle this differently than Trump, then it will create a very different outcome than in the Trump investigation. But of course, when the Department of Justice appoints a special counsel, in many ways, it's starting to feel like the exact same level of seriousness that it's been bringing to the Trump investigation, because there is a special counsel for that one as well.
That's exactly right. The president and his team misunderstood how seriously the Department of Justice would take a case like this, and they miscalculated that there would ever be a world in which the Department of Justice could just look the other way in Biden's case while simultaneously investigating President Trump.
Right, in some ways, the Trump investigation actually necessitates that the Department of Justice take the Biden investigation as seriously and with as much force.
Yes, and from there, things got even worse for President Biden. A couple of days later, on January 14th, the lawyers for the president found even more documents during a search of the president's library, just adding to both the substantive total number of documents that had been found and to the sense of a kind of drip, 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 in which the president and his team don't look like they're being forthcoming.
And shortly after that, we have the FBI search of Biden's house in Wilmington that you described at the start of our conversation, Mike, which turns up even more classified documents. So at this point, how many documents are we talking about? And can we say much about the nature of them and the classifications they involve?
Yeah, much of that remains opaque at this point. We don't know details about what the documents actually are, why they are classified, what level of classification that have been stamped on them. The president's personal lawyer said over the weekend that investigators had seized six more items on Friday in that 13-hour search, but how many pages is an item, whether that could be a box of documents or a single document, that still is unclear to us, and I think we're still working to better understand the number of documents and what's in them. So we know that there were many fewer documents found in President Biden's possession than there were down at Mar-a-Lago in President Trump's possession. We don't have a lot of information about the difference in terms of classification level. We do know that in the case of President Biden, many of the documents date back many years. They were from his time as vice president, and in some cases, even his time as a senator before that, whereas in the case of President Trump, documents were obviously from his presidency, which were much more recent. You know, but, but in the end, no matter what level of classification and no matter how old they are, they're documents that should be handled properly and are going to be important to the Justice Department, no matter what.
Right. You know, it strikes me that in the end, the Biden White House did execute on this strategy very faithfully. I mean, they did cooperate seemingly at every turn with the Department of Justice, and they did, for those 68 days, keep all this information from the public. And so I wonder how the people in Biden's inner circle now think about that strategy, given where we are and how it all looks today.
I mean, look, the folks that we've talked to inside the White House discuss this as a sort of long-term versus short-term strategy. Yes, in the immediate days and weeks, fingers are being pointed, a lot of media attention being paid to this in a way they would obviously have preferred to avoid, but they argue that in the long run, it will be proven out to have been the right move, both in terms of preventing the president from getting into any serious legal jeopardy, which they insist that he won't be because of how cooperative he's been, and they think that drawing the sharpest distinction they could with how former President Donald Trump handled it will ultimately end up to be a really good PR move as well. In the long run, again, you know, at the end of this saga of both presidents and their handling of documents, they, I think, fully believe that they will be seen as having made the proper choices to cooperate, even if that meant that they took a PR hit, whereas the former president, Mr. Trump, will have been seen to be taking a different path.
And potentially taking a very different kind of hit at the end of this DOJ investigation.
Right, exactly.
I'm curious, Mike, is this how you see it as a longtime White House reporter, as a strategy with a short-term pain, long-term gain kind of ratio?
We will now come back to order after our work session, and the first item in the evening session is public hearing and second reading of ordinances. K1 is the petition of Greg and Amanda Spearon to obtain a special use permit to operate a short-term rental on approximately 0.1608 acre on land zone R1, low-density residential located at 3113 Fleetwood Avenue, Windsor Hills Magisterial District, Philip Thompson, Director of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is the fifth special use permit for a short-term rental, so we're starting to do more. Kind of location, this is located a block off of Brampton Avenue, near the city of Roanoke, in line with the county. Along Brampton, there's a variety of commercial uses. Mount Olive, Puritan Baptist Church, it's located in close proximity to the property as well. So the property is located at 3113 Fleetwood Avenue. As you mentioned, it's a little over a tenth of an acre, so 0.16, currently a single-family home, and they're looking to do a short-term rental on the property. Couple photographs, here's the front of the house from Fleetwood. This is kind of the backyard. The pool is on a neighboring property, so it's just the patio that's on the property. And this is kind of a different view of that backyard. Inside, a couple shots that the applicant provided. On the top floor, there's a kitchen, a living room, a dining room. There's also three bedrooms. This is a picture of the first one, and here's the second and the third, and then there's only one bathroom in the house, which there are pictures of that. So kind of layout, top floor, three bedrooms, one bathroom, a kitchen, a living room, dining room. The basement is unfinished, they have indicated that they don't plan on finishing that. It has laundry, and also the garage is on the bottom floor as well. Short-term rental, we added this to the zoning ordinance a few years back, but we defined it as the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for a charge for the occupancy. And obviously, this use does not include other short-term rentals that we have defined specifically with more, with different definitions. So with, when we adopted the changes to our ordinance, we did have, we do have use and design standards. The first one is that they have to get a zoning permit, they have to provide, the applicant has to provide information regarding the property, they have to provide their contact information, and if they're not the person that we need to contact to resolve issues, then they have to give us an authorized party that is responsible for resolving complaints. County, if for some reason that there's a change in the applicant's address or personal contact information, they need to provide that information to the county within 30 days. If the house sells, the special use permit is still good, but a new zoning permit would be required from a new applicant. And then obviously, the short-term rental permit could be revoked by the zoning administrator if there's a failure on the applicant to comply with all applicable regulations set forth in this section and elsewhere in the zoning ordinance or county code. And then in the R1 and R2 zoning districts, which this is in, that if you're less than five acres in size, your parcel size, you have to get a special use permit. And obviously, 0.16 is a lot more than five acres. So existing zoning surrounded by R1, a little bit of C2 along Brampton Avenue to the south. Neighborhood conservation, some transition along Brampton Avenue as well. Neighborhood conservation is where we have established single-family neighborhoods that are delineated, and the conservation and existing development pattern is encouraged. So the planning commission held a public hearing in January 3rd. During that public hearing, there were no citizens who spoke on this application. The planning commission and the applicant discussed the following. So the applicant plans on listing the property on Airbnb and probably VRBO. They're finalizing their list of rules for the property. Some of those that they were discussing was only accepting guests verified by Airbnb and VRBO, not allowing large gatherings, limiting overnight guests to six people, limiting the number of vehicles on the property, I think it was three, but I'll let the applicant speak to that, and requiring guests to e-sign rules prior to finalizing their booking. The applicants live nearby, I think in the Oak Grove area, and have given their contact information to adjacent property owners. They're currently renting the property long-term to traveling nurses, but want the flexibility to rent it short-term. And also, the property they own in the city, because they do own a property in the city, is a long-term lease. So with that, the planning commission recommended approval of the special use permit for a short-term rental, with the one condition that the number of overnight guests shall not exceed six people. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Any questions of the board for staff?
The applicant is here, if you have any.
Would you like to come forward? If you would, please, just start with your name and address.
It's Greg Spearon, it's 3881 Kentland Drive, Roanoke 24018.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want to just tell us a little bit about your, your goals here?
Yeah, sure. So I mean, you know, I've definitely gotten into sort of being a landlord, my wife's dad did it, and we sort of saw the benefit of it, and we have a long-term rental over in the city, and we've been wanting to try the short-term. I want to show my kids about hard work, all that kind of stuff. But you know, like they mentioned, we're looking, we're not necessarily going to go to full short-term right now, we may just use it to sort of fill in the gaps for traveling nurses, that kind of thing. It's more, we're wanting the ability to go that route, and that's sort of what we're looking to gain, is the ability to go that route. We haven't fully decided if that's the full way we're going to go, we're more just filling the gaps from traveling nurses, that kind of situation.
It looks like a very nice house. So this is in the Windsor Hills district. Mr. Radford, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm probably going to make my comments after the public hearing that you open and close.
Okay. Are you, are you finished? And if so, I'll go to public comments.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Awesome, awesome. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Are there any speakers that wish to speak on this? Have you received any? So that being the case, if there are no speakers, we will close the public hearing. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, so I just had a chance to meet Greg just a minute ago. Greg, you can sit down, by the way. You don't need to stand up. Give your legs a rest. I really like what he's got laid out, we see good pictures, you know, we have been kind of looking at that to make sure the integrity of our neighborhoods are kept at a certain standard, and I think what he and his wife are planning to do, check all those boxes, I appreciate. I did see the smoke detector in your, in your, in your pictures just now, which is required, but, but thank you for that. I, you know, at this point, I'm ready to make a motion.
Any questions or comments from the rest of the board? We're ready to entertain your motion.
Okay. I find that the proposed special use permit meets requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code, and the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of Roanoke County's Zone Ordinance. It's in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, and it will have minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. Therefore, I move that we approve the petition to obtain a special use permit with the condition that the number of overnight guests shall not exceed six people.
Is there a second?
Second.
Willa Clark, please call the rule. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. So you got your S U P. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you all.
Absolutely, absolutely. So item L is citizen comments and communications, and I have two people who wish to speak. The first one is Mr. Bruce Love. If you would please come forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Bruce Love, I live in the K Spring Magisterial District, homeowner at 2776 Bobalink Lane, that's in Roanoke, Virginia, here in K Spring area. And I'm here to address the board out of concerns for the recent proposed assessments in the real property taxes, specifically the millage rate. I understand the real estate valuation process as do you, and I'm not questioning that, but if you look at our, I'm going to back up a little bit to what's going on nationally. Our federal government, because of its policies, whether it be energy or domestic or foreign, has created a severe amount of inflation that creates an undue burden on the average individual, not only in our community, but nationwide. And so are your constituents, the residents of K Spring and other magisterial districts, are having to make hard choices between healthcare, the cost of fuel, the energy, heating their home, and now with the proposed assessments, even keeping their homes, you know, their residences. And so the federal policies are not going to change, and I assume you're all astute and educated, and that you realize that our country, Roanoke County, at some point is in for some very difficult economic times. The proposed assessments are about seven times of what we would normally expect to see, okay? And so it's, it's, it's a windfall to the county, and I understand you have unfunded capital projects and other issues, but by the same token, the residents, it's an undue burden. And so I'm here to respectfully ask that in this ongoing process of public hearings dealing with the proposed assessments, that you seriously consider a reduction in the millage rate, as you have in the past here historically, because as the county grows, there's more properties, there's more revenue, you know, the millage rate has historically gone down, and I think for the benefit of the residents of Roanoke County, I ask that you please give that serious consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
So the next speaker is Janine Johnson. If you'd please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Janine Johnson, and I live at 3452 Menelark Road here in Roanoke, Virginia, 24018. I'm here this evening to encourage you to step in and reduce the proposed increase for 2023's real estate assessments. I agree with what Mr. Love was saying, as I'm sure many of his voters, your voters in your separate districts would also. With this ongoing inflation and recession looming over us, this proposed increase will not help your voters during this hard times. If anything, it will put more of a hardship on them. My personal proposed rate of change has more than doubled from last year's increase of 7.01% to the 2023's proposal of 18.53%. And I know taxes usually go up and not down, and what I'm worried about is another doubling in my real estate assessment of next year. Will it be 37.06 if we continue with the rate changes as they're going on right now? With these astronomical increases, you are allowing our homes to become more of a liability than an asset. I personally did not get an 18.53% increase in pay, as I'm sure neither did any of you. So why the jump in tax increase? In a time when necessities like food, gas, and electricity have gone through the roof, why allow this unnecessary increase to happen? You as a board have the power to go in and change the millage rate to reflect the ever-increasing inflation rate, and not allow a computer-generated statistic to govern your voters' payments and put unnecessary burdens on them. I encourage each and every one of you to do your due diligence in reducing these proposed millage rates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. Thank you to both of you for coming forward this evening. So moving on to reports and inquiries of board members, first on the docket is Mr. North.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some comments about our visit last week in Richmond. On Wednesday and Thursday, January 18th, 19th, county staff and supervisors' team visited the General Assembly to lobby for county legislative priorities. We were first introduced by Delegate McNamara on the House floor. He, by the way, promoted Madeleine Sepcic in title in his introduction, and I'll leave it up to Mr. Kaywood to explain that. Attended the Finance House Committee, where Delegate McNamara presented his tax relief bills, especially the one dealing with raising the standard deduction in Virginia tax structure. By the way, I understand that passed the House today, so we'll see where that lands in the Senate. All of our teams split up and visited all 37 members of the education committees in the Senate and the House for support for additional school construction funding and scoring for the grants, both which are budget amendments, of which 1.3 million in addition to the 1.2 million for the grant structure, which was approved last year, for a total pot of 2.5 million, is up for approval. I want to thank Madeleine Sepcic for coordinating this so that we all had our task to perform and did it efficiently. And I don't think we got any calls saying, what's this all about? So that's a good sign. We later met with Delegate Rasul on the Catapa Hospital Continuum of Care. He has a budget item for 147 million that's in the appropriations budget for review. We later met with Delegate Austin, Vice Chair of Appropriations Committee, to express our thanks for the Economic Development $500,000 grant for the Woodhaven 100-acre site. In addition, we discussed I-81 funding, airport expansion, and as well as Korean technical school funding, all of which are budget amendments that have to clear the assembly. Upon return on Friday, I followed up with the Regional Commission's efforts to answer the governor's question on the 10-year economic benefit analysis for future airport expansion. The answer was delivered Monday, I'm pleased to say, so that Vice Chairman Austin can review it and pass it on to the governor if he agrees. With that said, Supervisor Hooker and Supervisor Mahoney will add more in their comments later on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. North. Next is Mr. Mahoney.
Two comments. Number one, I want to thank Mr. Love and Ms. Johnson for coming out tonight. I want you to know that the phone has been ringing off the hook in K Spring on the same issues that you've raised, and I've received many, many emails. We, we're struggling, we on the board are struggling with how to address our citizens' legitimate concerns, and I, I hope that we might be able to come up with a solution that'll help many of us. With respect to Mr. North's comments, I do want to thank Mr. Lubek and Ms. Sepcic, they really prepared us well for speaking with our delegates and senators in Richmond. You may recall that one of our legislative priorities was to provide for civil penalties for certain violations as opposed to criminal violations. We were unsuccessful in securing any support for that initiative with our local legislators. However, while we were in Richmond, in one of the county, cities, towns, subcommittee meetings, Delegate Tada, she is from Virginia Beach, she had a similar bill that Virginia Beach City Council also was requesting with respect to civil penalties. I was able to speak in support of that. Mr. Lubek was able to provide her and her staff, and I think the city attorney's office in Virginia Beach, with some of the information and research he had done. To date, I met with Mr. Lubek this, this afternoon before our board meeting. I cannot report to the board any further action on that draft legislation. It did pass the subcommittee, I'm not sure when it will make it to the full committee, but at least one of our, one of our additional legislative initiatives is, is progressing, so that's good news. With that, Madam Chair, that's, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you, me too. I got a couple, a couple of comments. I too want to applaud Ms. Hooker and Mr. North going to the legislation, taking your time to go up and do that.
And Mr. Mahoney.
And Mr. Mahoney, thank you, I didn't realize that. The three of y'all going up, taking your time to do that, along with staff, you know, that's, that's important for the legislators to see us face-to-face, you know, hand-to-hand to, you know, talk about the issue is very important, and all three of you, just I'm appreciative of you, and so are the residents of Roanoke County, because you're pushing for them to make things a lot better. Second comment, I too want to thank Mr. Love and Ms. Johnson for telling us about the real estate assessment, and we are a little conflicted, but we're going to address it some way. Two Fridays ago, when they gave that, you got everything in your mail, I had a Friday morning breakfast with a And, you know, we did that to look after our, our citizens. But I think on the real estate side, while we may be in a somewhat of recession, we're not going to see an O8 again. I think real estate evaluations are probably here to stay. They may flatten a little bit, and I think that we need to take a long-term look at that, and then how we adjust our tax rates accordingly. I think Mr. North has commented a number of times through the years, we are one of the highest taxed counties in this Commonwealth of Virginia. I personally like to get out of that bracket, so, anyway, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. So, I just have a couple of comments. My first is, we did have a great trip to Richmond, and I appreciate my fellow board members with all the work that they did in putting together the, the plan of attack as we went in and talked to our friends, and I feel like we had a, a great united front in our message, and the legislative agenda card was fantastic, and I think our message was clear. I really appreciate staff and their work in putting it all together. That was huge, and appreciate your support for that. I also wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Jeff Childress, who works in the assessor's office. Apparently, he does the assessments for the Catawba District, and I had one of my citizens who contacted me just to say how good he was in explaining the process, because everyone's on edge right now, and there's a lot of emotion associated with it, and this citizen just went on and on about how that they still don't like it, don't get me wrong, but they were so appreciative of his time and effort and explanation, education on the whole process. And, and I'm really appreciative to Mr. Childress for that. Thank you for your commentary. I think we're hearing from a lot of citizens, and I appreciate you coming tonight and expressing that commentary. We all hear that message routinely, and we've got a task in front of us that we'll have to address, and, and we want to be good to our citizens. It's because of you that we're here, and we want to represent you well. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
And will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.